Call this meeting to the Salem Housing Authority to order if the clerk will call the roll.
Vice Chair Kazer.
Present.
Commissioner Anderson should be present.
On the phone.
Okay. Commissioner Nanki.
Here.
Commissioner Leung.
I'm here.
Commissioner Asik.
Councilor Anderson's here, I'm sorry, I had to mute him.
Thank you. Chair Hoy.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
And Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under us, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no additions or deletions. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment? No. Commissioner Kazer, the consent calendar.
Thank you. For the consent calendar, we have item 3.1A, which are minutes from our February 25th meeting. And then we have action items, 3.2A, which are recommended appointments to the Salem Housing Advisory Committee, and those are Joyce Judy and Julia Jari. 3.3A, revision of the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Payment Standards. This is to adopt Resolution Number 2239, increasing the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Payment Standards effective June 1st, 2019.
Do we have a second?
Second.
I moved all those things.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Cook. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. No public hearings, no special orders of business, information reports.
Counselor Hoy, or Commissioner President Hoy, I'd like to speak a little bit on the information report. Again, I just want to congratulate the Salem Housing Authority for the program management report, because it's really important in the ATRAP stuff, to not just get them housing, but to support community reintegration for those people. And it looks like they're doing a fantastic job, and I want to commend them for the job they've done.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm Nicole Yutz with Salem Housing Authority, and as he was just discussing, we have the Community Life Group Information, which is a part of the ATRAP program. This is a program that's put on by the Housing Authority, ATRAP staff, to help reintegrate individuals back into the community, and have a support system that they can build with other individuals that are going through similar circumstances. And the program is shown to be very beneficial, and helping us to help reintegrate those individuals back out into housing and continue to be stable.
If you could point it to your mouth, please.
Should have. We're the instructions. Okay. So, on the program management report, is there any questions on any of the statistics
If the recorder would please call the roll.
related to our programs?
Board Member Kazer.
Present.
Board Member Anderson.
Anything else?
Likewise.
Board Member Nanki.
Here.
Board Member Leung.
Counselor Anderson, perhaps if you could remute your phone, please.
Here.
Board Member Asik.
Here.
Board Member Hoy.
Here.
I'm sorry, I see I might have gone too quickly on the program management report,
Board Member Cook.
Here.
Board Member Lewis.
Here.
And Chair Bennett.
Here. Okay.
but I have nothing else to say.
Do we have any public comment? Ashley Hamilton, there you are.
Thanks.
Is that it?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
So, other than that, all of our programs are still performing very well, and we continue
And then we'll get you off the mic here. There you go.
All right, you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Am I free to proceed? There you go.
to lease up the voucher program.
All right. All right, thank you for having me.
We do have about, like I stated last time, 200 good newsletters that we're still trying
My name is Ashley Hamilton. I am the Associate Program Director of the Arches Project Through Community Action
to get out there in the public, and get them up, all of our numbers up to 100% again.
Agency here in Salem. As it's well-known, Arches is located at 615 Northeast Commercial Street, so just north
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
of the Downtown Core, nestled right next door to Marion Square Park.
And seeing no further items on our agenda, we are adjourned.
We acquired that facility in July of 2017, which really nestled us right in between two of the highest density and most vulnerable homeless populations in our region, which is Wallace Marine Park and Marion Square Park, as well as the Downtown Core. Since October 2016, Arches has worked hard to identify over 5,829 homeless and at-risk individuals in our communities, which includes Marion and Polk County, of which 2,628 are identified as unsheltered. So those are individuals or families who are outside, who lack a fixed nighttime residence. This could be a car, on the street, or a place not meant for human habitation. And our current family percentage is around 14% of that population. Arches sees ourself as a service provider along a continuum, providing services from shelter to supportive needs and basic need services, to housing and rental assistance. Over the last year, our 16 housing programs have successfully housed over 1,400 individuals in our community, and prevented the loss of housing for over 500 individuals. In our day center alone, that is a gateway for services, and we see over 125 unique visits a day, where people are able to access mailbox services, hygiene kits, bus passes, and pet food. So our overall goal is to expand upon these services, to provide long-term strategies that can assist with the recommendations laid out by the Homeless Solutions Task Force. We see ourselves as a mechanism for coordinating, connectivity, and a gateway to service engagement. Our current efforts in this expansion are illustrated by our hosting of the Benevolent Food Program in the Arches parking lot, to which we are hosting almost nightly. And we are also working with our downtown neighbors to help facilitate the annual homeless connect program, as well as the Warming Shelter Initiative, to which we've activated 42 nights this winter season, providing over 3,500 shelter beds. So currently, our biggest expansion today is the renovation of our first floor. We've completed the first phase of our rehab in July, and we have now begun efforts for the last and final complete phase of this rehab. This will include the addition of amenities for showers, laundry, as well as ADA compliant restrooms. And it's going to be these additions, which is going to apply flexibility for programming to adapt us to fit the service needs of our community. And it's through the use of URA funds, which can help cultivate a partnership with the city, which will help meet the needs of our most vulnerable citizens. Thank you.
Very good. Right on the money. That is perfect. Any, yes, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor.
When is the next connect event?
March 26.
Because I was at that last year, and it was a wonderful event, and I want to make sure I get it.
It's coming back.
Real quick.
Thank you. Counselor Cook.
Thank you. I just had a question with the renovations that are happening, and other agencies that also serve similar clientele, maybe slightly differently. How are you coordinating with UGM, with Center for Hope and Safety, with other agencies downtown? Can you kind of explain a little bit?
Sure. We have a really good relationship with both of those entities. And so with the UGM and Center for Hope and Safety, it's not about a reduction of, or duplication of services, it's an amplification to meet the needs in our community. So some individuals who may not be able to, or may not wish, it's more like may not wish to access services in one location, they have the option in choice to go to another location. And that's what it's really about, is providing that freedom of choice. And that, at Arches alone, we have that extra layer of the housing and rental assistance. And so someone is going to be able to come in and access our showers and laundry services, but they're going to have that direct pathway to housing assistance. And so we coordinate with the UGM and Center for Hope and Safety. They can use them as the access point, then referrals over to us to get into our rental assistance programs.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Hoy, the consent calendar.
I move approval of the consent.
Why poll?
I'm sorry.
Did you mention the poll?
Yes, I will. I move approval of the consent calendar with the following poll, 3.3B by Leung and Anderson.
Second.
The consent calendar includes minutes from our February 19th, 2019 Urban Renewal Agency meeting, the February 25th Urban Renewal Agency minutes. It includes an action item recommending appointment to the North Gateway Redevelopment Advisory Board and the West Salem Redevelopment Advisory Board of Frank D. Pack and Samantha Ross. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Good. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And we will go to Counselor Leung. Want to make a motion on your poll?
The way I phrase it would be, I just want to poll 3.3B, 19.117.
No, you.
You need to make a motion.
Yeah, just, you recommend the staff recommendation. Make a motion, recommend staff recommendation.
I make a motion to move forward with a staff recommendation for 3.3B, 19.117, the grant amendment to support renovations at the Mid Willamette Valley Community Action Agency Arches Building.
Great, thank you.
Second.
Seconded by.
Oh, I got it.
Hoy, okay. Hoy. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Leung.
Actually, I had some questions that I had contacted Kristin about prior to our City Council meeting, and most of those questions, I believe, were answered, and I feel that those concerns were addressed. I understand that also Counselor Anderson had some questions, too.
I'll call on him when you're done.
Okay.
You're done?
Okay, thank you. So my questions are taken care of already.
You're okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Counselor Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also pulled this, and I spoke with Director Rutherford early this morning. I'd just like a little public explanation of the fact that the grant has gone up from $300,000 to $1.1 million, and what else is being done here. I'm all in favor of this, I just think we need to inform the public as much as we can of what is happening at Arches, and how we are feeling, attempting to deal with the less fortunate people in our society.
Kristin, you want to go ahead?
Absolutely. I'm happy to offer an explanation. So Kristin Rutherford, Urban Development Director. So this project is actually two separate projects. So we've got one part of the building that is being built out as expanded day room space. And that's the piece that is going to have showers and laundry and restroom facilities. And that part of the project has multiple funding sources that are paying for that work, including community development block grant funding through the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So it's a federally funded, partially federally funded project. Then we have another part of the space that is intended to be developed as a sobering center. That part of the project had a grant from OHA in the amount of $330,000, and an urban renewal grant. The total project cost for that piece of the project was estimated at about $508,000. Okay, so two separate projects occurring kind of simultaneously in one building. Because of that, HUD looked at this project as one project. So the environmental work, the environmental assessment that was needed for HUD also applied to the sobering center project. That has led to a couple of different changes in the scope, in terms of a little bit of redesign to accommodate some site-specific issues tied to archaeological impacts. So that has increased the total project cost. Additionally, because the OHA grant comes with the requirement of operating the sobering center, and because we don't have all the financial resources in hand and committed right now to move forward with that commitment, we have recommended that we withdraw from the OHA grant, and that we substitute those funds with urban renewal funds, so that we can complete the build-out. And that helps us have a little flexibility in terms of timing of operations. We've had a number of conversations with Arches about how they could use this space during the interim until a sobering center can be funded. And so the plan is to expand their services, their day room operations, and then to begin extending hours through weekends and into evenings, so that people can have access to this laundry and restroom and other facilities. Build this out to accommodate a future sobering center, but not incur that obligation of operating it until all the resources are at the table. So the increase in urban renewal grants, the urban renewal grant is tied to cost increases, and then to the backfill of the OHA grant, so that we can build this all out at once. Are there any questions?
Any further questions? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion passes.
Aye.
Okay, seeing no further business, the Urban Renewal Agency is adjourned. Call this meeting of the Salem City Council for March 11th to order. If the recorder would please call the roll.
Counselor Kazer.
Present.
Counselor Anderson.
Here.
Counselor Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Leung.
Here.
Counselor Asik.
Here.
Counselor Hoy.
Here.
Counselor Cook.
Here.
Counselor Lewis.
Here.
And Mayor Bennett.
Here. Okay. Counselor Hoy, additions and deletions.
I move additions and deletions to the agenda.
Second.
Seconded by Kazer.
We have an addition, or revision of item 3.3A. We have a revised report, updated, removed Linda Nishioke from consideration for an appointment to the Downtown Advisory Board.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Counselor comments. Why don't we start with you this time, Counselor Anderson, so we don't miss you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I have things to say, and one relates to the additions and deletions we just had, and that is the addition of Linda Nishioke from the Downtown Advisory Board. And I just want to explain the reason. It was noticed this morning that she might not fit the slot that was allocated to her, which was financial and banking, although she and her husband are property owners downtown and are developing something downtown. So just want to say that the next opening that comes up that she fits, is slotted into, I'm sure we will be appointing her at that point. The next thing I want to say is about, oh, maybe 10 days ago, I worked the graveyard shift at the Warming Center at First Presbyterian Church from 10 o'clock to 3:30. It was a very, it's surprising to say it this way, but it was a very uplifting experience to see the help that we can give to less fortunate people in our society who need someplace to get out of the cold on nights like that. I also want to thank the, all the churches that have volunteered to house the Warming Center. I particularly want to thank Lori Walker, who was my crew leader on the 10 to 3:30 shift. And Lori, as we will remember, was given a volunteer award by the city last time at the volunteer recognition. And it's just exactly things like this that we recognized Lori for. I want to encourage all counselors and all citizens, the next time there is a request going out for people to volunteer at the Warming Centers, please consider this, because I do know there were a couple nights when we could not open all the Warming Centers, because there weren't enough volunteers. So I would hope that, if it happens again this winter, that people volunteer, so we can have all the opening centers open, the Warming Centers open.
Thank you, Counselor. Did you have anything else?
No, sir, that's it.
Okay. Anyone else? I'm going to mention a couple of things. Last week, I had the opportunity to participate in the World Beat Organization's grand opening of their shop and display area over at Pringle Plaza. It was down at the Reed Opera House, and has now moved, and they've got a wonderful space over there. I really recommend taking an opportunity to go to that. Friday evening was the First Citizen Banquet. Really want to congratulate all the recipients, particularly the citizen of the year Ken Johnt, from Columbia Bank. It was really quite a good event. Saturday, Young Art showcased 420 kids in this town displayed art, and it was over at Bush Barn. It was really very good, and I have, for the third time, presented the mayor's award, which probably demonstrates to them my complete lack of critical skills, but it was, I really enjoyed it. It was very good. And finally, had a chance to have dinner with the senators Saturday evening on their 65th year, as the ambassadors of harmony for the City of Salem. It was really a delightful event. So I'm working on getting them to come down some evening and just serenade you guys, just so you can hear them. If you haven't heard them in a while, they're really very, very good. They keep taking national and international awards. So, okay, anyone else? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet.
So I wanted to just mention that Counselor Asik and I had attended a event back on the 28th of February. It was organized by Professor Janet Lorenzen, who was an assistant professor in Department of Sociology at Willamette University. She worked alongside with her undergraduate students in Sociology 358, Social Change and Resistance, to host a workshop that was entitled Community Visioning Workshop. And they had brought in James Rojas, who is an urban planner, community activist, and artist. And we had probably about maybe 20, 25 people or so who were in the room, and it was a great opportunity to sort of, for each of us, to come together, both individually and then together, to discuss what is it that we were envisioning for Salem when it came to the growth of Salem and how it looked like. So it was a really good experience, and I hope that if Mr. Rojas returns, that other folks in the room will be able to attend.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on then to proclamations. There aren't any presentations. Parks, foundation donation for McKay Park. Excellent.
Carol Snyder, President of the Salem Parks Foundation. And this is most of the rest of our board. Alan Alexander, Betsy Belshaw, Thomas Smith, Linda Beerly, Pat Norman, and me, yours. Two years ago, Salem Parks Foundation made an offer to the City of Salem, that we would raise money for a new playground at McKay Park, if the city would add money in the budget for site preparation and installation. And tonight, thanks to the generosity of citizens all over Salem and beyond, we can deliver on our half of that bargain. So we would like to present to you a check for $73,574 for a new playground at McKay Park.
Thank you very much. This is a project I think we've all been working on. This was in my ward years ago, working on this project, and I'm really thrilled that Counselor Hoy is here to really accept the check, I think, on behalf of that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, just on behalf of the folks in Ward 6, this park is such an integral part of our neighborhood. And I know I personally use this park frequently. It's, Salem Bike Club does rides out of this park, lots of folks play soccer, all sorts of things in McKay Park, and it is really a fundamental part of our neighborhood. And I couldn't be happier and more grateful that you've made such an amazing effort. Thank you so much.
And now, Mr. Manager, it'll be up to you to meet our side of the bargain in the budget. Tom, did you want to say something?
Oh, no, I'm good.
Okay. Anyone else?
Is that for that awful concrete?
Yeah, yeah. Great, well, thank you very much, very much. Except that's a pretty common occurrence, that check.
Probably try to encourage it by.
That's a good point. Have a place for them. All right. Public comment. You recall, you have three minutes. The orange light goes on when you have one minute left. The red light means stop, as it does in most situations. The red light means stop, unless you're going too fast. And please give your name and order address. Steve Anderson, followed by Kathleen Dewana, followed by Mark Wig.
Good evening. Steve Anderson, 3240 Geller Road Northwest. I'm here tonight to ask the council to vote in the affirmative for item 5A, this motion. I want to thank Counselor Kazer and Counselor Lewis for their hard work to put forth this positive solution, and also the Congestion Relief Task Force who provided the work to get to this point. I think this is good for our community, and thank our counselors for making this motion, and ask you to vote for it. In addition, I just, in my written material, I've asked just a couple of other things in the consideration, as the staff does a report. One is there are four items, and I would ask to look at a fifth, where we look at the ability to piggyback the Congestion Relief Task Force Center Street Bridge proposal with that of the ODOT seismic upgrade for Center Street, to maybe see if there's some economic advantage there to work with ODOT, to do the construction all at once, instead of doing it twice and paying more, and also disrupting with construction for two different construction seasons. And third, as you look at Marine Drive, to seriously look at right-of-way purchase on the front end, and to take a hard look at that. There's an economic benefit, as that gets delineated, for the West Salem Business Area, and also multifamily development in that area. And also to prevent the two-to-three-block road to Nowhere. So as you go forward, and as you work with staff over the next 45 days on this, to look at, is there benefit? And looking at piggybacking with the seismic upgrade, and then looking at right-of-way. But again, thank you, Counselor Kazer and Lewis, for bringing this forward. Appreciate your work for looking for solutions. This has been an issue before the West Salem Community and Neighborhood Association for several years, so again, vote in the affirmative for 5A.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, Ms. Dewana.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. I'm Kathleen Dewana. I live at 1045 Fifth Street Northeast in Salem, and I was the past Land Use Chair of the West Salem Neighborhood Association.
for several years, so again, vote in the affirmative for 5A.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, Ms. Dewana.
Thank you, Mayor Bennett. I'm Kathleen Dewana. I live at 1045 Fifth Street Northeast in Salem, and I was the past land use chair of the West Salem Neighborhood Association. I, too, would like to reiterate Steve's suggestion and, well, councillor Lewis and Kaser's implementing the recommendations of the Congestion Relief Task Force. Particularly important part of that is Marine Drive as for local access and circulation. There's great benefit to the community by investing and purchasing right-of-way there as well as development. So we, at West Salem Neighborhood Association, have, in the past, documented the traffic congestion that exceeds the capacity, and we have often been told that the reason that, basically, all of the growth that we're accommodating is already included in the transportation systems plan. There are lots of good elements in that plan, but we need to put them to work. So I appreciate all of the work of the Congestion Relief Task Force and hope they move forward with good solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, Mr. Wig.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Mark Wig, 1950 Saginaw Street, Salem. The Congestion Relief Task Force list of projects include many things that we don't have the money for yet. The one thing we have the money for, and we've had the money for 10 years, is money to buy the right-of-way for Marine Drive. Let's get the right-of-way, and then also, if there's money available from that, pave a multi-use path. A multi-use path doesn't need the drainage and the other stuff that a full road build would, so you can pave a lot more of it, and you can get all the way out to River Bend Road. Do that. Make that change in the plan, please.
Thank you. Any questions? All righty, thank you very much. Anyone else on this issue, or on any issue? It's public comment, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you very much. Councillor Hoy, the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move approval of the consent calendar.
Go ahead.
All right, our consent calendar includes minutes from the February 19th council meeting, minutes from the February 28th council meeting. Resolution 19-97 adopts a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for, and if successful, accepting Oregon Parks and Recreation Department local grant to provide funding assistance for constructing a new restroom facility at the north end of Riverfront Park. Item 3.3A, appointing applicants listed in the facts and findings section of the Citizen Budget Committee, Citizen Advisory Traffic Commission, Community Police Review Board, Downtown Advisory Board, Salem Cultural and Tourism Promotion Advisory Board, and the Salem Art Commission. And then we have item 3.3B, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Marion County for the design and construction of an asphalt slurry seal surfacing project on various city streets and at Willa Lake wastewater treatment facility. Item 3.3C, approving the city of Salem's positions on the attached legislative bills active in the 2019 Oregon Legislative Session, and that is the consent calendar.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? No? Motion passes. Okay, we'll go to public hearings. Okay. You'll recall, the hearing has been closed. We are deliberations at this point, so we'll proceed. Councillor Leung, do you have a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I make a motion to move the staff recommendations.
Second. Second by Hoy. Rejected. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to say something?
I'm just here for any questions.
So far, none. I'm sorry. Who has questions? Leung, do you? Okay.
Thank you for being here. Sorry, thank you again for being here tonight. I'm happy to see that, based on the recommendations from the last city council meeting, that there's more of effort to be able to try and save a number of trees on the property, and I also noticed that originally, I believe, the applicant had mentioned that they're going to try and save four of the significant trees, but there's a possibility that one of the significant trees still might be removed depending on the fire department approval.
Do you want me to respond to that issue?
Sure.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Aaron Panko with the Planning Division. We did share the revised plan that was provided to council at the February meeting with the fire department. They had some concerns with the initial revised plan. This plan that was provided on March 5th was reviewed by the fire department. It appears that on paper, this configuration will work. It will meet their requirements for maneuvering around that turnaround. However, the true test on whether this will work is when it's constructed and when they actually drive a vehicle through that. The fire department wants to make sure that in the event that when they try to run their fire truck through this, if there are issues with the roundabout design and there's something that needs to happen with that roundabout, with removal of the tree, that the applicant won't be limited if that tree needs to go to provide the fire access.
Thank you. Anything else, councillor? Did you have anything else?
Oh.
Go ahead.
The other question I had, trying to remember what it was now. Yep, if you could ask a question, I think.
Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a question regarding the statement from the school board. I know this is pretty standard. When a development comes through, we ask for consideration from the district to see how this could have an impact in enrollment for the surrounding schools, and in this case, with this development, we've got Pringle, Jetson, and South. And I attended these meetings for the boundaries. I thought it was very interesting how this says that it won't really have an impact and how there's an effort made for walk zones and school transportation service, and I was specifically thinking of buses being able to transport within this complex or walking paths for students as well. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Sure. We do provide notice to the school district on projects like this that increase housing. The city itself doesn't get into the district team, the forecast for anticipated student populations for those schools, or for the bus routes for the site. So this is something that the school district is now aware of and can plan in the future for a development like this.
So, I'm sorry, follow-up question with that. So, yes, completely, this is within the school district's purview, not necessarily the city's, but it's just, have you ever had one come back where they've said this impacts the capacity to which we're already at capacity at these schools?
That is a frequent comment on development projects where there are schools that are at capacity or over capacity. They'll provide the numbers to us and show how that will change.
And also, I know we've got several competing factors as well, because I know for students in the Salem Kaiser School District experiencing homelessness or experiencing housing instability, increasing the amount of housing available should be able to address some of that. But on a different note, you had mentioned bus routes, but I was thinking specifically on plans where students need direct transit from home to school, something where they would need to be able, that seems like an access issue, and I would want to make sure that not only we're accommodating emergency issues like fire, but also the ability to get an individual bus, if necessary, required for that individual.
Sure. These layouts do take into consideration larger vehicles, fire trucks, moving vehicles, buses. So based on the plan here, it does demonstrate, again, that a fire truck can maneuver around the site and most likely around that roundabout, and if they're able to do that, I would imagine a bus would be able to also.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It just seemed weird as I was looking through it, on the staff report, it, under facts and findings, it lists condition one, condition two, condition three. Underneath condition two, then there's a sub-C, sub-D, A, and B or up higher, but say under sub-C under condition two, it says the city council may find that this modification, et cetera. Is that part of the staff recommendation for the condition? Because it seems somewhat separate from that, and I'm wondering if there's other things that we would need to potentially find.
So with C in particular, this finding here is about the adult recreation area. So part of the revision to the site plan, the applicant switched the position of a few of these buildings and switched the position to some of the open space. So our multifamily design requirements have a minimum percentage of the building frontage, so the frontage along Wiltsey that needs to be occupied by buildings. We also have standards that require any recreation areas be located central to the site. So the switch here to accommodate those trees actually gets us further away from meeting those standards.
Right, down to 110 from 135.
So we're recommending that the council adopt those, the findings here, allowing it to move further away from meeting the standards with the goal of preserving those trees.
But is that rolled into condition two somehow? That was what was kind of confusing, because even then, the reiteration that came forward, specifying conditions one, two, and three, but these other pieces are sitting out there.
We're recommending that the city council adopt these as findings, not as conditions.
Oh, yes. Excellent, thank you.
Any further discussion? Councillor Lewis?
Yeah, just a comment. I want to thank Multi-Tech Engineering, especially Mr. Grins, for his creativity and willingness to work with folks. It may not be, but I've been involved with Mr. Grins for a number of years. I think this may be the first roundabout that he's been involved with. So that certainly is interesting.
Okay, any further questions? Yes?
I wanted to follow up on a question that someone from the last meeting we had two weeks ago brought up, had to do with, is there, based on like how the build is going to be, and someone had mentioned like possibly saving some of the trees that are on the, where the new sidewalk is going to be built?
So the Wiltsey Road right now does not meet standards for a collector street. There will need to be a sidewalk on here, and our standards require the sidewalk be located along the property line. Most of the trees along Wiltsey Road, I think I shared a picture, I may have that here, we can go back to, most of these trees are probably going to be in the path of either the street improvement or the location of the sidewalk, and I think the applicant in the revised plan did try to save some of the trees that are behind this rule, but most of them that you see in this picture here would need to be removed to accommodate that improvement.
There was another question, too, that I saw that someone in the community had sent in. It was a recommendation for a different type of tree to be planted. Is that something that someone in the staff could address, or is that a separate conversation?
I think perfectly good question.
We can adopt any kind of condition for species if that's what the council desires.
Before doing that this evening, if you were to choose that direction, I would suggest consultation with the city forester so that the recommendation from the residents is compatible with the city's urban forestry plan and trees that we have found to survive in conditions such as along that road.
I think generally, understanding the process for citing trees in the public right-of-way, I mean, that's really what this will be. It'll be the city's decision which trees to cite. Would you, will you be making a consultation on that? How would that be done?
Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director, good evening. If the comment is related to trees that are in the public right-of-way, there's already a list of species that we have found that are the most appropriate for surviving in these kinds of environments. I wasn't sure if the question was a street tree or tree species inside of the property, in which case that's, you know, the Public Works Department is moot on that issue.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may, Director Fernandez, a second question about the trees and arterial standards. How much flexibility is given for a situation like this where with an arterial standard on a road and we have a tree line that's quite significant and quite established, what kind of flexibility is given for arterial standards to be able to accommodate walking, biking access, and still maintain the trees?
Well, obviously, we want, you know, the sidewalk is really important. If we don't install, if the developers don't install the sidewalk to save the trees, at some point in the future, as any living thing, the tree will be gone, and then the city will be required to install the trees. In looking, I don't know a lot about this project, and looking just at this photograph, I don't see how putting in a sidewalk on the curb line would save the trees, since they seem to be right up against the curb. So it looks like either way, the trees are impacted to be able to install the sidewalk along this frontage.
Keeping it on the other side for access? It would need to be both sides for an arterial?
Well, yeah. Our standard is sidewalks, you know, we think that having sidewalks is really important for pedestrian safety, so, yeah, we would want sidewalks on both sides of the street and especially along the side that has those apartments.
Okay, any further discussion? All those, are you ready? Do you have something else?
Yeah, just a, I want to refer to the email that was sent from the Quadri family, and I believe that they were recommending the ponderosa pines in the area, so I don't know if that's something that within your staff could take a look at, or if that's even one of the options.
Yeah, ponderosa pine, thank you councillor, ponderosa pine is not one of the species that we would plant in the right-of-way. There just isn't a lot of room. They're a great species. There are a lot of, we have saved ponderosa pine along Commercial Street, and it is a tree that in the future, as we're doing our plantings, we can reintroduce in certain areas, but it is not one of the trees that we would want to plant between the sidewalk and the curb.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Okay. All right. Councillor Kaser?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm speaking on behalf of councillor Lewis and myself, and councillor Lewis and I, we move council to direct staff to begin implementing the recommended actions identified by the 2018 Congestion Relief Task Force. We further move that within 45 days, staff provide a report to council detailing a plan of action for implementing the recommendations, progress on items underway, and any additional steps council should take to further the recommendations.
Second. Second by Lewis. Okay. Go ahead.
I was cast, I was being.
You're okay, you're okay. We know you're there. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is really a motion from both councillor and Lewis and I. We met a couple of weeks ago, or a few weeks ago now, to really talk about how can we move forward on the congestion relief and to really get these recommendations out to the council, and we thought we need to move on this quickly. And this is a show from both of us as representatives of West Salem that we care about what's happening there, and we want to make sure that we're addressing it the best that we can right now. And we were both on the Congestion Relief Task Force. It was a task force that had a very narrow scope to do things as soon as possible within the next couple of years, and so that's what this is designed to do, is to move those forward.
Councillor Lewis?
Yeah, I just want to echo what councillor Kaser has said, and the importance of moving forward quickly on this, thus the request to have staff bring back the information in 45 days. It's mostly to ask for definitions as far as expense and time. Some of these, at least when I read them, could be done easily by, for example, the Court Street crossing into the park, that south and, south crossing could be eliminated, I would think, relatively easy, although I recognize things aren't always easy. But the purpose of this is to get the information so we can make good decisions. And I also want to mention, I'm sorry I didn't catch this.
Second by Lewis. Okay. Go ahead.
I was, I was cast, I was being.
You're okay. You're okay. We know you're there. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is really a motion from, from both Counselor and Lewis and I. We, we met a couple of weeks ago or a few weeks ago now to really talk about how can we move forward on the congestion relief and to really get these recommendations out to the council, and we thought we need to move on this quickly. And this is a show from both of us as representatives of West Salem that we, we want, we care about what's happening there, and we want to make sure that we're addressing it the best that we can right now. And we were both on the Congestion Relief Task Force. It was a task force that had a very narrow scope to do things as soon as possible within the next couple of years. And so that's what this is designed to do, is to, to move those forward.
Counselor Lewis?
Yeah, I just want to echo what Counselor Kazer has said and, and the importance of moving forward quickly on this, thus the request to have staff bring back the information in 45 days. It's mostly to ask for definitions as far as expense and time. Some of these, at least when I read them, could be done easily by, for example, the Court Street crossing into the park, that south and, south crossing could be eliminated, I would think relatively easy, although I recognize things aren't always easy. But the, the purpose of this is to get the information so we can make good decisions. And I also want to mention, I'm sorry I didn't catch this before, but I, under the motion warrant, direct staff to specifically initiate the following actions as soon as possible. Number one says solicit a recommendation from the Salem Parks and Recreation Advisory Board regarding a parking, walk, bike shuttle service at Wallace Marine Park. I'd also like to have their comments, if any, on the recommendation of removing the, the bar on Musgrave Street. And to, when they reach out to ODOT, to possibly mention that that would be a time limit, let's say from 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM, just one way. So we don't have to keep going back to entities and asking for what their thoughts are.
Okay. I want to just comment on this as well. I proposed creating this task force a little over a year ago and appointed the members. I can't be more pleased with the work that was done by Counselors Kazer, Lewis, and Counselor Hoy for the work they did, as well as the city staff and the consultants that were brought in to really make this possible. I, I think it was, as I recall, when I, when I created it, I, I realized we were facing a real difficulty in terms of moving forward on a third bridge, whether it moved forward or not, we were 10 years out on that thing at best. And I continue to believe that this can help. It won't solve everything, but can help, and I'm really pleased, will be pleased to hear from the staff with their recommendations on what to proceed with, whether it's from our, directly from the transportation, public works side or the parks, public works side as we look at these various aspects. I'll be very interested myself in the recommendation that comes to us regarding Marine Drive. I think it's time to kind of start moving forward on Marine Drive somehow, whatever the agreement is that we want to do in terms of moving forward, how that's going to occur. So again, I really want to thank those of you who served on this and the whole council for approving the creation of this. I think it will assist us as we move forward and maybe open our minds to some other congestion relief ideas as we start seeing some of them occur. Counselor Nanki?
Mr. Mayor?
Nanki?
Okay.
Called on you, you talk.
Just a question, because the, the beginning of the motion, to begin implementing the recommended actions, is that all of them? And we're just going to go forth? During the, when this came up the first time, I had a question regarding, how much would it actually impact congestion? And some of these actually have a fairly high price tag associated with them, and so I'm not necessarily in favor of spending a ton of money for a very small gain. And so kind of curious what staff thoughts were on how they were going to be proceeding with the motion and what we'll actually see in that report that comes back.
Mr. Fernandez, you look prepared.
If, if I may, thank you, Counselor. So, so our intent, some of these actions require the start of some process. For example, the, you know, going to SBRB, talking to ODOT, so we'll begin to initiate that. There's already some work that's been done on Marine Drive, so we need to bring that back to council. And then, yeah, there's other items that are spendy, and when we talked to Counselors Kazer and Lewis, you know, we reminded them that, that these are spendy. So, so a lot of the work that will come back, the report in 45 days, is where are, is there anything that can be implemented right of way? Is, where are we on process? And then more definition on cost, next steps, that kind of thing. So there's, I don't anticipate that we'll be back in 45 days and say, hey, we got three of them done, because they all require some level of, of public involvement.
I just want, hey, we're going to spend half a million dollars and it's not going to impact congestion at all.
Okay.
You'll, we'll, we'll discuss it here first.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Counselor Anderson?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I too want to offer my congratulations to Counselors Kazer and Lewis for coming forward with this motion. I think it shows that despite some of our differences as the council, we're ready to move forward and take steps that we believe we can take to help deal with this problem, and I look forward to the report in 45 days.
Thank you. Who else? Anybody?
I'm here.
Okay. Very good. Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, information reports. Lots of good information here. Anyone have any questions on the information, in the information reports? Counselor Leo?
I just want to make a comment.
Sure.
Is that possible right now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I wanted to make a comment on 6D, the 19.106, and that one is within my ward specifically about the page, I was really interested, it was page 15 of the report, under F, to preservation of trees and vegetation. I'm glad to see that there were 53 trees that were on-site, including nine significant Oregon white oaks. And of those, only one tree is being removed, which is a non-protected fear tree, and there was no protected trees are proposed for removal. I just wanted to bring this up because I feel like it's important for the city and staff to consider, when we are having new builds, to try and preserve as many trees as we can, whether they are protected trees or not protected trees. I mean, these trees are, I mean, if we think about our history of Salem, I mean, we also are part of the Arbor Day celebration of being a city tree, a city.
Tree city.
Tree city, thank you. And so I hope that, that is kept in mind, especially as we continue to grow and develop our properties.
Yes, Counselor Cook.
Thank you. I had a comment on item 6E that's in Counselor Leung's ward, but also in the Sunny Slip Neighborhood Association, just in the comprehensive plan change to RM1. Just thinking of the parks in the area and the transit and the use, seeing that it meets all the requirements, but just a reminder that some of these things look one way on paper and on plannings, but as the Parks Foundation showed, they don't always have what's zoned already in place on the ground. We're still looking at Secor Park and making sure that these developments have access to existing parks as well and sidewalks.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further discussion? Okay, we'll move on then to second reading of ordinances.
Ordinance Bill number 319, an ordinance declaring certain territory located at 4945 Dalton Lane Northeast, annexed to the City of Salem, prescribing zoning and withdrawing the territory from the Salem Suburban Rural Fire Protection District. Counselor Anderson?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Leung?
Aye.
Counselor Osick, temporarily absent. Counselor Hoy?
Aye.
Counselor Cook?
Aye.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Kazer?
Aye.
And Mayor Bennett?
Aye. Motion passes. Thing passes. Let's see, I'm going to give, I want to wait just a second for Counselor Osick in case he'd like to register his vote on these two. Just give me a second. Counselor Osick, we just did the second readings. Would you like to register your vote, both passed unanimously?
Aye on both.
Aye on both, Counselor?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good. Okay, so they both passed unanimously. All righty. I don't have any further public comment. All those, okay, we're adjourned.